Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Five thirty-one. Can I get a move, please? Ramondar, Second Ear Councillor Sliker, all in favor? Councilmember Mariki, you can read the knowledge.
Yes, I am. I'd like to acknowledge that the Rural Municipality of St Andrews is located on Treaty One territory, the traditional lands of Anishinaabe, Cree, OJ Treaty Dakota, and Dene people, and the national homeland of Red River Maki. We respect the spirit and intent of treaty and treaty making, and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit, and Maki people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and collaboration. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Doran Ross, uh, I'd like to delete.
I'll go into number three right away.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Councilmember. The adoption of the agenda, we have a motion to adopt the agenda as this, are there any changes? Are there any additions?
Yes, changes. Under new business, uh, number eight point one, St Andrews Airport's sixtieth anniversary, I'd like to get that deleted from your agenda.
Moving, Councilor Hunt and Second Ear Councillor Sliker, all in favor? Uh, I have a report, reception of delegations, uh, four point one. CBV citizens on patrol program for South St Andrews, there's a Robert Jesson here. Beating some.
Done? Deputy Mayor, council members.
Yes.
Thank you very much for having us as a delegation. We are members of the South St Andrews COPP program, and I'll give you a little bit of history on that at each moment. What we are is we're extra eyes and ears in assisting the enforcement team in patrolling our area. And we do the South St Andrews, and that basically is a mock work through the golf course, through the, uh, railroad track, and to the river. South St Andrews Citizens on Patrol Program was initiated in the late, in late two thousand and five. There was a meeting held in the principal's office of St Andrews School attended by community members, Ken Oswald, Kim Stanky, and Randy Stanky, and Principal Robert Jessen, this is myself. The meeting was held in response to several break-ins on St Andrews Road. The second meeting was held at the St Andrews Community Center, attended by about eighty community members. A need had been established, so we made application to join Citizens on Patrol January the twenty-eighth, two thousand and six, and received authorization March the second, two thousand and six. We initially had fifty-one members and have varied from twenty to thirty members since. We do not receive any funding from the provincial body that we're a part of. Uh, they were funded by the Justice Committee and then MPI, and now as Justice Committee again with funds from, uh, criminal activities. We, we did traffic control for Triple S rodeo and received a stipend for our services, and this was, this provided us some money in order to operate. And our provincial body told us that we can't do that anymore, so we don't do the Triple S. But we still do the St Andrews, uh, Christmas concert, and we get a small stipend from them, and we use that for some of our funds as well. What we do do, and we have received, uh, grants from the, uh, municipality. Two thousand and eighteen, we received a thousand dollars. And in two thousand and twenty, we received one thousand and five hundred dollars. During the pandemic, our costs obviously went down because you, unless you were riding with your, uh, wife or your husband, you couldn't drive in partnership. And so what we, we, uh, did do is we did, we were able to save expenses, but we're down to literally a couple of hundred dollars. When we are on patrol, we patrol in pairs. Each patrol is two hours and covers approximately fifty kilometers. Notes are taken and kilometers registered. The driver receives a gift certificate, you get a ten dollars for time and gas, and the passenger, which is the note keeper, receives five dollars a, and a gift certificate, and that is at Harry's Foods. Regular monthly meetings are held and attended by Paul Hume, our RCMP representative. And so why we're here, we're asking for a yearly budget from the municipality. What we're doing is we're helping the community, and, uh, we're volunteers, of course, with no funding. And, uh, so we're asking, I would ask, uh, Ron, he's got some information to present.
I'll just pass some of these out. Uh, I'm Martin and Ron Zimmer, I'm the Recording Secretary for South St Andrews Citizens on Patrol. So as well as, uh, recording the minutes and distributing them, I also keep some statistics on behalf of the, uh, of our local organization, recording the amount of hours that are spent on patrol and the number of kilometers driven primarily. As Bob mentioned, the average, the average, uh, distance traveled by a, a pair of people on patrol is usually about forty-five to fifty kilometers. So, uh, you can see that, uh, the, the information that I've provided for you is, uh, is a spreadsheet for two years, the full year of two thousand and twenty-two and a year to date for two thousand and twenty-three. For two thousand and twenty-three, we're, uh, almost at the same number of patrol hours as we were for the full year last year, with still two months to record. And, uh, you could see from the mileage, uh, driven in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, that, uh, the composite mileage for the whole group is over two thousand kilometers , uh, driven while on patrol in the community.
I would ask her secretary to give you an amount of money that she thinks that we need for a year.
Okay, in two thousand and eighteen, we received a thousand dollars from the municipality. Our expenses were two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-three cents. In two thousand and nineteen, we didn't receive any monies, and our expenses were two thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-four cents. In two thousand and twenty, we received one thousand five hundred dollars, our expenses were one thousand one hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, and we haven't received any funding since two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and twenty-one, our expenses were eight hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-five cents. In two thousand and twenty-two, four hundred and five dollars and seventy-five cents. And in two thousand and twenty-three, to date, we've got six hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. The expenses are mainly the stipends, uh, for the patrol, the drivers and the, uh, passengers. We used to give them fifteen dollars, the drivers used to get fifteen dollars, uh, per patrol, and the passengers got ten dollars a patrol, but we've had to cut that back to, uh, ten dollars per, per patrol for the driver and five dollars per patrol for the passenger because of our declining funds.
New stimulus comes coming in, and what happens is I, I calculate the number of hours that people put in, and then we, we establish that about once every three months. Do it every month, this doesn't make sense for us. And so there's probably going to be about another, uh, two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollar expense on that on top of what we spent so far this year. Any questions, councilmembers?
I don't have a question, pardon. How many members have you got, Bob?
Uh, we, we started off, we had about fifty-one, fifty-two all the time, and we got down around thirty. I think we've got twenty-eight or twenty-nine right now.
We're, we're between twenty-five and thirty.
Between twenty-five and thirty.
Very good.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, Rob Mariki, uh, I'm just wondering, what are the times that you folks go out?
We, we go out, uh, basically anytime that the individuals feel comfortable with. We used to do some nights, uh, but, uh, the RCMP are not available for contact after about ten or eleven o'clock at night, so we don't do the late ones now. But, uh, any, anytime from, uh, say nine in the morning until, uh, nine at night. And, uh, we don't go, you know, like, we used to go out once a month per group, okay? We have some members that go south in the wintertime, and so obviously they don't patrol, but they patrol when they're here in the summertime, and some of our patrollers go out more than once a month. I think that you had a ride with one of our members.
Yes, I did.
Yes, okay.
I'm suggesting, like, um, I've taken average of all the six years that you've got written down here, it works out to about eight hundred and fifty dollars a year. Now, what are you looking, like, how, what, what would, what makes it work? Like, what makes it, uh?
Well, what we used to have is that, that we used to put on a barbecue at St Andrews, uh, uh, Harry's Foods, and that was one of our methods of, of getting people attracted to join COPP. And we used to pick up touristy members each time we did that, and it was a bit of a thank you for the members for going out as well. That used to cost us, I don't know, around eighty-five or a hundred dollars at a time. If we were to get, I would say, close to a thousand dollars on the side of that, we would probably be in pretty good shape. If we weren't, we would ask them to come back and, and ask for more, but, uh, we don't want to take more than we need.
That, and wonderful that you, that you do this well, your work is absolutely amazing, Councilor. Uh, on, in terms of, um, occurrences of what you come across, so do you, you'd either call nine oh one if it's an emergent situation you come across, or do you have a contact with their security, or do you call the non-emergency number?
When we go on patrol, we, we phone the stocker RCMP, identify who's on patrol, the vehicle, license number, and when we're done, we phone the RCMP to let them know. Uh, not very often does anything happen, okay? But, uh, when it does happen, we get very quick response from the RCMP in Selkirk. And they, they like us to contact them when they, uh, when their switchboard is available, okay? And their switchboard is not always available after ten o'clock at night now. And, um, if we call, they respond very quickly. They, they kind of keep an eye on where we are because, of course, we are only eyes and ears, and we have absolutely no authority, and they don't want us in harm's way.
And what type of, um, identification do you have, whether it's on the vehicle or?
We have a magnetic, uh, sign stating COPP on the side of the vehicle.
You have other questions, Councilman? Professor, do you have anything else?
Well, I, I, I hope you can fund us a bit, because it's pretty difficult. Otherwise, and, and obviously the stipend that we're taking, if you take fifty kilometers, that ten-dollar stipend just about covers the gas.
Yeah, understandable, understandable, yeah, understandable. Well, is there a chance, like, with some more money, you'd do more patrols, or that money?
There is a chance that we could attract more people. Okay, because like if we have, have the bargaining, that's really, I know that when we go to the, uh, to the, uh, event that you hold at the, at the, uh, community center, for volunteers and asking, we do pick up members that way as well. This last year, we've lost three members, one to death, two to retirement, and we picked up three members so far this year, so we're, we, we just maintain around twenty-five to thirty people all the time, which is one of the larger groups in Manitoba. I think we're, we might be the second largest COPP group in Manitoba. Yes.
Uh, what are your requirements for when you're recruiting?
Requirement?
Yes.
You have to have a, a check from the RCMP. And, uh, if you pass their check, then, uh, we, we instruct you, and, uh, like myself or one of the other members will take you out and train you on the way, and we, we just have two new members in the back corner. We took out for training, and it happened to be a slippery day, and it was an eventful day. And, uh, so, uh, we were, we were on patrol at the airport, the St Andrews Airport at that time. And, uh, there was a gentleman that hit the ditch. So, uh, I had my tow, my, my truck with me, so we pulled him out, and then we're going down River Road, and there was a car in the river. But we found out that the car in the river probably had been, uh, dumped in the river closer to Winnipeg, and it had floated down. So there was nobody in it, but, uh, it's not very often that we have eventual times. We have picked up, uh, our identified shoplifters at Harry's Foods, running out and follow them and call the RCMP. And, uh, they're quite successful in picking them up. And, uh, other than that, it's, it's generally fairly, fairly quiet. When we started, there was ten break-ins on St Andrews Road alone, and the, uh, crime rate in South, South St Andrews area has dropped considerably with the, uh, input of the, uh, COPP. Now, provincially, the CLPP has been going, I think, for thirty-two years, and we started in two thousand and six, the beginning of two thousand and six. So we're one of the older groups as well. Selkirk used to have COPP, and if they had it, they lost it, they had it, they lost it. Uh, I think Pino still, still has a COPP. I don't know how many members, they don't have any anymore.
No, no.
No, with them now?
Yeah.
Okay, I know that they were down to two members sometimes during the, uh, the COVID time. And then, uh, uh, West St Paul has a small group. I think the largest group in Manitoba is, uh, LePaw, and then maybe Portage and then S.
Thank you for your time, thanks for what you do, and we'll, uh, discuss this some of ourselves, and we'll, uh, see what we can do for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for the community.
He's on, yeah.
I have four point two, you've got it, uh. Brittany Clark from the Food Cycle Program, checks and surveys. Good night.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. Hi, Brittany.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Wonderful, I will share my presentation. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor, members of council and staff. My name is Brittany Clark, and I'm the Municipal Program Manager at Food Cycle Science, and I'm here to present the results of the pilot for the Food Cycler Program in St Andrews. So before we look at the results, I'd like to give you a short recap of our company. We are a Canadian company based out of Ottawa that is a hundred percent focused on providing food waste diversion solutions using our innovative technology called the Food Cycler. Two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three were big years for us, as we were selected as the finalists in Impact Canada's Food Waste Reduction Challenge. And I'd like to acknowledge that your municipality's Food Cycler Program was made possible in part due to the federal funding from this program. We've submitted our application for stage three this month, and we're hoping for good news. As a company, we are proud to say that as of today, the Food Cycler is the trusted food waste solution for over a hundred municipal partners across Canada. When St Andrews joined, you were the sixty-ninth municipality to pilot this solution, and we want to acknowledge and thank you for your willingness to trial an innovative solution to the longstanding problem that is food waste. With support from Impact Canada's Food Waste Reduction Challenge, a pilot program was run in St Andrews that included seventy-two participating households. The net cost to the municipality was five thousand dollars plus tax and shipping. The program was run from June to August of two thousand and twenty-three, and usage was tracked for twelve weeks to calculate the total waste diversion. Participants completed a survey to provide the data and feedback. We collected sixty-four responses from the seventy-two participants. A couple of the first things we asked was, how important is greenhouse gas reduction to you? And how important waste reduction is to you? And residents rated this eight point seven out of ten and eight point nine out of ten. And these first two questions allow us to really get a sense of how important reducing greenhouse gases and reducing waste are to your residents. When we asked where their food waste went prior to using the Food Cycler, a large number of residents answered that at least some of their food waste went into the garbage. A smaller number of residents said that they composted all year, and that for others, this was only possible in the summer months. For the people who do not compost, fifty-six percent chose not to because of concerns about animals and pests like bears and raccoons, or concerns about maintenance. A number of residents also reported concerns about odors and lack of knowledge. These answers are in line with a lot of the data we have collected in our municipal programs, and the Food Cycler is a great solution for these problems, as it's easy to use, odor-free, and the byproduct prevents wildlife encounters. In St Andrews, uh, forty-four percent selected the FC thirty models and fifty-six percent the Eco Five models. Based on the data collected for diversion, your residents ran an average of three point three eight cycles per week on their FC thirties and three point six nine cycles per week for their Eco Five. This is equivalent to two hundred and ninety kilograms of food waste per year per household that is diverted using the Food Cycler. This works out to about twenty point nine eight metric tons of food waste from the seventy-two Food Cyclers over the course of the year, and this works out to about twenty-seven point two three metric tons of CO2 equivalents per year that would be avoided in comparison to disposing that same food waste into your landfill. When we asked residents about their waste generation, they reported generating zero point five six fewer standard garbage bags per week, which is a reduction of twenty-nine point two five garbage bags per household per year being trucked to local landfills. When we asked users if increased awareness of food waste motivated them to waste less food, the overwhelming majority said yes. When people are managing their food waste at home, they become more aware of how much food they are wasting in the first place. We always say the most effective waste diversion strategy is to not generate any in the first place, so the awareness that comes with this program is very important. Even though it can be difficult to put that into numbers, it's an added value that this solution provides and likely contributes to the reduction of garbage mentioned previously. When we asked about electricity costs during the pilot, only three percent reported seeing an increase, and sixty-two percent of residents reported that they were unsure, and this typically indicates that any increased electricity costs were not noticeable. When asked if the municipality were to offer a Food Cycler Program at low or no cost, ninety percent of residents indicated that they think their friends and neighbors would participate. An overwhelming ninety-four percent would recommend it based on their own experience. This slide is pretty self-explanatory, and it speaks to the success of this pilot program. A hundred percent of participants will continue using the Food Cycler as a solution to their food waste moving forward. This level of participation far exceeds any other organic waste management solution out there today. For example, the Green Bin Program we have here in Ottawa has weekly curbside pickup and only a fifty-seven percent participation rate. Looking at backyard composting, which is available to everyone with the space to do it, the rate of adoption has been stagnant for decades, and based on the results that we've looked at, it's quite low across your municipality. This a hundred percent participa- participation rate in this pilot program is very encouraging and speaks to the willingness of residents to adopt this program. Overall, residents rated this pilot program four point seven two stars out of five, with seventy-six percent of residents rating it at five stars. This is a testament to all the work that you have put into planning and launching of this pilot. In the survey, we also asked for written feedback and comments from participants. While there were many to choose from, we always like to be transparent and include samples of the more constructive and helpful comments that we can learn from. To recap, we have twenty point nine metric tons of food waste being diverted by the seventy-two Food Cyclers, twenty-nine point two five bags per resident per year reduction in garbage, and a hundred percent of residents will continue using their Food Cyclers. And just to bring up an example, uh, the city of Nelson, B.C., which is roughly the same size as St Andrews, is the first municipality to adopt the Food Cycler at the community level as an organics management solution. Some of the resources in place there include partnerships with a local grocery store to host a refill station where residents can access carbon pellets for free, a local repair program, bear-proof bins where residents who don't use their soil amendment can drop it off, an e-waste recycling program, and an extensive education resource program. The possibilities with a program expansion really are endless, and we'd love the opportunity to discuss further with staff members to increase the impact in St Andrews. A few next steps. So in order to fully understand the lifecycle analysis of a Food Cycler Organics Program, we've developed an emissions calculator tool, which is a consulting tool to assess the impact your community had by eliminating GHD emissions and the significant effect it can continue to have on sustainability efforts. Consulting and emission calculations are being provided as an added benefit to our implementation partners at no charge. All of our early implementation partners, which is you, have first rate of refusal on current and future federal funding. We're able to offer the same subsidy pricing model to any orders placed prior to December thirty-first of this year. We ask that you accept this presentation as information and refer staff to discuss the next steps. Options available would be an expanded program or a larger conversation regarding Food Cyclers as a community-wide organic solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brittany. Do you want to have any questions? Comments? Let's see, it's working. Okay. I, oh, go ahead, Council.
Um, did we have, did we have a waitlist by chance of people that were wanting?
We did, and then, uh, they graciously, uh, gave us more than we needed for, and, uh, it worked out wonderful, okay? So, I gotta say that, uh, I didn't know what to expect when I got mine, but I'm a little disappointed that I didn't get the larger bucket, because, uh, normally my food scraps would go either in the garbage or to the dog. So I'm happy to say that my dog is now at a healthy weight, and my garden is going to be really good for you too, so. So, uh, yeah.
I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah, it's, it's absolutely amazing. It's, uh, it's, it's, it's very interesting to see how much food you actually throw away, and when that bucket gets filled up almost on a daily basis from just food scraps by the fridge or whatever's left over, uh, you know, after supper or something, that it adds up quickly, and, and it's very surprising. It's very surprising how much food actually goes in the garbage, so I, I'm, I'm glad I got one, I'm really glad I got. I missed it. I mean, I missed it, you missed it. Okay. Thank you so much for your time. Thanks for the survey. Will we be able to put that survey on the website?
Sure.
Yeah. Surveying the website then, and maybe we'll, uh, attract a little more interest for, for next year, and then hopefully that there's a subsidy program next year. We'll see. And hope from there. Thanks so much, Brittany.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening, everyone.
Okay, moving forward, management reports, five point one. Um, everyone's looked at these progress reports. Any questions, comments? Animal Control, five point two, anyone have questions, comments on animal control, self-explanatory? None? Financial reports, six point one. Uh, everyone's had a chance to the financials, any questions, comments on the financials? You have CFO here, CEO, CEO. Questions for them? None? Moving along to old business, no business, uh, number eight, new business, uh, eight point two. Uh, the St Andrews Parking Lot tender results. Everyone's had a chance to take a look at that, and there is a copy in there, and any comments about that?
Maybe I could speak to it, sure, just before, uh, discussion by council, so, uh, we, we had a, an estimate of an Ashfall parking lot, uh, informal asking around for about five hundred thousand dollars, and we were looking at, uh, you know, the airport was looking and saying, we're not going to be able to Ashfall. We put it up for tender, and I, and I just want to discuss that here because, uh, the tender was well attended by, uh, contractors and some people from the community. We opened it in this room. And what we're doing, uh, deputy mayor is, is moving forward with transparency and, and, uh, you know, following, uh, tender rules. So when we did this, we came back and, and, uh, a price that was much better, uh, than informally going out. And, uh, I'm, I'm very pleased with the results. I know Councillor Marecki attended, and, uh, you know, just to see how the process went, and we want to make the process even better moving forward. And we want to make the process even better moving forward, tendering where we'll 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 make the tender process live and people will be able to view it while it's happening. So that's a goal from the CAO's desk in the future, so transparency, communication to our residents. What we're looking for is is although we came in a lot lower than five hundred thousand, our budget for asphalt, the largest, largest lot we so what we did was we put out for four different sizes of lots. We are two different sizes. Uh, one asphalted, you know, a large size and a medium size. And then one just gravel, large size, medium size. And we, our budget is two hundred and fifty thousand and we're about twenty-eight thousand over. So the decision council will have to make in a resolution at the next council meeting will be, what would you like to do? Would you like to have that full-size lot and get twenty-eight thousand dollars when we're out of reserve? Or would you like us to go back to the contractor and say, we only have two hundred and fifty thousand to to spend? We need to reduce the lot a bit. So I'm hoping for some discussion today. Uh, you can come to a consensus, but there's there'll be no decision because it's committing the whole and no decision means no resolution. And the resolution would come, then we would prepare for the next council meeting on what the resolution would look like for council.
Well, and following your recommendation, I think it's a no-brainer to move forward with the taking twenty-eight thousand dollars out of our reserve because you're never going to get that kind of pricing again, like, you know, it's it's a really good price. Make the parking lot the size that it was designed to be built at and uh like I say, as compared to some of the other prices, it's, I can see where five hundred thousand dollar estimate come from, so let's take advantage of it. We got an excellent grant on it and and our chair was, you know, a quarter of the airport, a quarter, so I'm all in favor of spending a twenty-eight thousand dollars to do a great parking lot, have a great job. Thank you for all the work. Councilor Slick.
Where do we get to twenty-eight thousand, Ben?
From the Recreation Reserve Fund.
I have to agree with Councilor Hunt on that. I think if you miss this opportunity and take four parking spots away to to salvage twenty thousand dollars, I think you're shooting yourself in the foot. It's there, they're there and it's for me, it would be an easy decision as well. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, walking trail, eight point three, walking trail based for ten results and recommendations. Do you have any questions, comments on that? Do you have something to say?
No, same process followed. We tendered, we put it on Merx and and you're seeing it here and we'll be coming back to the the next meeting where we can get a resolution, but it's here for discussion today if you want. We are going with the the lowest price and and, you know, you could see the results of, you know, formal tendering.
Speaker.
How much is this thing gonna cost at all total? Extension and bridge and whatever of this project?
Well, we 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 have a trails. I don't have it right in front of me, but we have a you know, we've done a trail study in that for the bridges, a bridge is about a million dollars. But, you know, we have money for a grant and we would look to to partner with West St. Paul because they would be a, you know, the the bridge would benefit them too, so looking to cost share fifty-fifty with them, I would approach them. And I I could come back and report on on the trails or or get you the report to to spend, but the trails is an ongoing a process where in our trails reports, it talks about trails throughout the community. I remember Counselor Feeblecorn asking, well, is this trail gonna come north? And we, you know, that's the long-term plan is to come north. Trails east-west, so it's it's a huge program.
It costs a taxpayer a lot of money to put them in and maintain.
Well, I mean, trails, linear trails, what I call linear trail is is a linear park. And in in this day, in this day and age, the demand for linear trails is very high. It links the community together. It's safe. Is there a cost to it? Oh, yeah, it it costs and it's taxpayer-funded, but we're also getting grant money. So we're being matched fifty percent dollars with the grants and surveys I've seen, not just necessarily in St. Andrews, but national surveys, provincial surveys that people are looking for active living and active transportation. More people are using their bikes. More people are walking.
It's my understanding when we did a survey on our own website in regard to the part of these trails, the majority of the people came back and said, no, they'd rather have the money put into the stuff. If I have followed that correctly?
Not for you.
I did a survey on our website about it.
Can you find some monitoring information for Councilor Slicker?
Yeah.
I just think moving forward, we've done that trail, you know, it's close. You know, almost from Lower Fort Gary there, continue on with it and it's and recreation, like I say, we hear all kinds of reports that it is necessary for health and welfare of the people. So. Councilor.
Yes, the the good thing about these trails is, yeah, they might be a little bit pricey, but once they're there, they're there, they're there. Uh, you know, our lifetime and the children's lifetime, they're just not gonna disappear. It's good investment.
Only if we maintain.
And they seem to be, I admire, they're well maintained. I I use trails on a regular basis and
I I bought a lot of them and I very seldom see people on. I've I've physically gone and sat at different areas at seven in the morning, noon, four, seven at night. And if you get a handful of people, that's all I ever see.
Well, I mean, we'd have to go with more scientific data than
Yeah, but I'm just saying that what my opinion of this summer, watching it, it'd be, that's just me.
And and my opinion from the CAO's chair is coming into to St. Andrews and and seeing that the the trail running as it is from north to south, I I was literally flabbergasted that the recreation had done such a good job to to get grant money. Other communities would, you know, would do whatever they could to get that kind of fifty cent dollars to to put in a trail. But I mean, it's a council decision. It's it's what council wants to wants to do. I'll report back to council on 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 trails, where we're at and where we're going as a reminder and we can go from there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any more comments, questions on that? Councilor Monder.
I was just wondering how we're gonna get across the road. There's no light like there is on Parkdale Road there, where they're gonna come across. And then we're gonna come across again to meet with West St. Paul. And their trail's on the east side and we're on the west, so I'm just wondering how we're going to coordinate that where the creek is there.
Well, where the creek is, West St. Paul has on both sides. They have a trail on on the east and on the west, you you crossed over over there and it's I'm I'm not, I I don't know the name of the road, but the road is is a residential road with only about ten homes on it and it's paved, so you can access that. The 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 highways department, MI, would not let us put a a walking bridge on the east side. They would not allow it. They said they definitely will not let us put it on the east side. They will not allow, you know, we talked about between those little concrete abutments. We thought there might be room on the bridge. They said absolutely not. So lots of stuff that you see what we're doing is based on what MI will allow us to do.
And I'd still like to see a path on River River Road. Putting sometime in the future.
And and I think that's absolutely something that we should be looking at. There's lots of grants out there for trails and and I think that'd be wonderful if we could get something going on River Road. Lots of great opportunities for for St. Andrews to, you know, to be that community of 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 active living and active transportation. It'd be wonderful.
Yeah, because that would probably be the most widely used trail, I would think, by visitors as well as the residents of the neighborhood, so.
Agreed.
And then as well in the north, we got the request from a resident, you know, to do number nine highway down Tom Prince to the Camp Crowns there, which is part of the suggestion of Sergeant Tommy Prince Trail, you know. And now with the new government, something to work on for that and for short reasons and and we work on that process for that trail.
Yeah, I think that's a that's another excellent spot. There's a number of excellent spots in St. Andrews to do these trails and and, you know, maybe what we do is we take, you know, we we gather everything that we've done to this point and we get our trail study, we review it as an administration, present to council and and, you know, maybe council has some new ideas. We also have the project that Lisa was working on in in Lockport for the trail there, so, you know, a potentially exciting exciting trail there. And, you know, that could be it is a hub now, but I mean, the more that we could do there for beautification and active transportation, that could be a real generator for all kinds of things for St. Andrews. And we've applied, we were we're in the queue for a grant that we've applied for a major grant. We did the big study last year and we got design and now we've applied for a grant to do the actual work there, so exciting times ahead.
Excellent, Brett, excellent. So anything we can do to maximize the grants, you know, anytime we can use fifty cent dollars, that's why I'm we we maximize the grant out for the airport there, you know, and and getting a superior project done for a little bit of extra extra money. I'm glad we didn't say, let's cut it back, you know, and pay within budget because for that little bit of extra money, because we got a half a half a million dollar project. Yeah, I agree. And we'll do the same thing with the with the trails, you know, it's
We will chase from the administration side. We will chase every grand dollar there is.
Good to meet that.
Okay, we move on to camera then. Number nine, camera. Motion that council moving camera at six fourteen PM to discuss matters that are preliminary stages in respecting which discussion in public could prejudice municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations as well as legal and personnel issues and be it for the result that the members of council agree to keep the confidence a matter that is discussed at a meeting that is close to the public under subsection one fifty-two point three and that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matters discussed at a meeting of the council or a committee conducted in public. Can I get a mover, please? Councilor Monder, secondaire, Councilor Feeblecorn, all in favor? Okay. Can I get a motion to move out of camera at six forty-two PM? Councilor Slicker, secondaire, Councilor Hunt. All in favor? Harry, thank you for the in-camera, the information items. Uh, number eleven in Germany, motion to adjourn the meeting at six forty-two PM. Can you get a mover, please? Councilor Feeblecorn, secondaire, Councilor Monder, all in favor? Harry, thank you, everybody.